Good evening. Our city clerk has some announcements to make regarding our Zoom broadcasting. Madam City Clerk?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The City, excuse me, pursuant to section three of executive order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, the regular meeting of the City Council from May 12, 2020 will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the council chamber will not be open for the meeting. Some members of council will be participating remotely and will not be physically present in the council chamber. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing the phone number listed below, which is *6716699009128, and enter meeting ID number 87603425132, and password number 719228. The city wants you to know that you can also submit your comments by email to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you in advance for taking all precautions to prevent spreading the COVID-19 virus.
This time, we'll call an order of the regular city council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
I'm present. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Robles? Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
I'm here.
Mayor Magna Bill?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
I'm here.
We have no special presentations tonight. Do we have any reordering additions or removal of items from the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We need to, we need to take item number...
Madam Mayor, item seven is going to be moved to new business right after item number It's under listed in our public hearing, and apparently it is not a public hearing, so it's being moved to new business.
But after number 10?
Correct.
Okay. All right, very good. So next, we have our consent calendar items, which are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are to be acted upon by city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for items from the consent calendar to be removed? Seeing no requests, is there, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for this consent calendar.
Begging.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hussey, and a second by Councilmember Allen. Will you call the vote, please? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Allen?
It looked like he said yes, but I couldn't hear him.
I said yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Magna Bill?
Yes, yes.
The motion has been unanimously.
Next on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any requests to speak at this time?
Actually, Madam Mayor, I received one written communication first, and then we do have a caller. One written was received by Mike Rhea, who wanted to remind the council that last year the results of the cannabis workshop ended by the council voting to bring the issue back to the council in June of this year. Therefore, June is right around the corner, so he wanted to give council a friendly reminder to get prepared.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhea.
I'm going to admit one caller that we have on the line, and I do believe that is Supervisor Supervisor Rao, are you on the line?
I am.
Hello, Supervisor Rao.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you for being here tonight. You had an update to give us, and we would appreciate hearing that.
I did. I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about what's going on at the county. Madam Mayor, I know that you are on a lot of the calls with the chairman and have familiarity with some of the things that I'll say, but it is changing hourly, daily. We are as frustrated probably as most of your council and your citizens. And so I wanted to start by giving a CARES Act funding update. The county has been told we will receive $380 million for COVID-related expenses only. And Councilmember Allen, this speaks to the correspondence that you sent me earlier today, and I kind of wanted to touch on this a little bit. That is very, very specific funding that the county can only use for COVID-related expenses from March 1 forward. We will be audited on everything, and it is explicit that it cannot be used to backfill any revenue loss of any sort. So it is a little bit of a challenge for us in how the county moves forward with the spending of that, and we are trying to figure out creative ways to get that to our partners to help. One of those ways was the chairman's idea to have COVID-compliant businesses, which kind of speaks to the incentivizing plan that we are working to lay out with the governor, which I'll touch on in a minute. The next round of CARES Act funding is slated to be for cities that have a population of less than 500,000. I've communicated to our federal partners that we would really like that to go directly to the cities for any of the losses that you have incurred, and to have that be a little bit more liberal in its usage than what we are restricted for at the county level. So I'm not sure when that is coming, but that has been told, we've been told that that is in progress. And Madam Mayor, you may have even more of an update than I do on that. But as far as that last round, the $380 million that came to the county, it is only for COVID-related expenses, and we can't use it to help backfill revenue losses either at the county or the city level. One of the things that we do believe that we are able to do with that funding is to provide it to our small businesses. And the chairman has a plan, what she's calling sort of his COVID-compliant plan, that has yet to be approved fully by the board. We anticipate at least $30 million being approved by the board to have go to our small businesses that remain COVID-compliant. And what we mean by that is either to remain closed under the restrictions currently in place by Governor Newsom, or as we begin to open our phases, to implement whatever the restrictions are as those phases begin to open. So whether that's a restriction in capacity, like reduced seating in restaurants perhaps, Plexiglas between our customers and our clerks, or anything like that, whatever the compliance measures may be for each sector, that if your business is compliant with that, we want to incentivize it. Right now, our working plan looks like it's going to be businesses that are less than 100 employees, and the amount that they could apply for beginning in July would be $2,500 per business. So it is a unique program that the chairman of the board would like to present to the governor to say, these are the things that we're doing to try to incentivize our businesses that are struggling to remain compliant, and we know that it is becoming harder and harder every day, and it is very, very difficult to ask that of a small business owner that's likely to lose everything that they have worked so hard for. So with that, we have also submitted a letter with all of our mayors, 24 of them, requesting permission for our county to implement its own phasing. And tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, the Board of Supervisors will have the opportunity to see our specific, unique phasing plan that is different than the governor's. We believe that it matches up with the needs of our more rural and remote county better than a one-size-fits-all that's coming out of the state, and our plan is to ask for permission to implement that. We are also hoping to have signers from San Diego County, Riverside, Orange, perhaps even Ventura County jump on with us and ask for that ability to be autonomous in how we choose to phase ourselves to be open. And with the incentivizing that we're doing, with the asking of permission, we are hopeful that the governor will not do what he did to our northern counties, which was to threaten to withhold FEMA funding, which in our county's case could be hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars if we ever had an emergency. And I'm not sure that the Board of Supervisors has the appetite to call the governor out on that challenge. So we really find ourselves in a very, very difficult spot. We will be discussing tomorrow enforcement. If businesses choose to open, it will be my recommendation that perhaps we kick those enforcement actions to each individual city for you all to choose what you choose to do with the enforcement, whether that's to enforce at all or how you want to handle it. We will have our phasing guidelines in place that you could perhaps give your businesses and say, when the county has given its permission by the governor, this is what it would look like to safely reopen. But that will be up to you to decide, and again, the board will take that action, or at least look to take that action tomorrow. And I think that we all recognize the significant financial position that we are all in. The county is in as bad a shape as every city here. I am screaming from the dais that this only takes into consideration our physical well-being, and that I truly believe personally that we are holistic human beings. We have our spiritual, our mental, our emotional health, as well as our physical health. And right now, we seem to have a huge imbalance where Governor Newsom and the state is only taking into consideration our physical health. So very frustrating for me personally, and I would like to see us back in balance, and I know it's affecting us all and will for months and years to come. So please know that you have an advocate for a safety opening with me on the board, and that we are trying to get to a place where we aren't held hostage by the governor withholding funds from us in the future, or potentially even the CARES Act funding that he could withhold. So we find ourselves in a very, very challenging spot, and we recognize the challenges that you have and are trying to help mitigate those as best we can under the constraints. So happy to answer any questions that you may have, and always am available to reach after hours or during the business day via cell or email.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Rao. As we are in public comment, we do have an opportunity for council members to ask a clarifying question if they would like. So are there any questions for clarification of the supervisor at this time?
I have one.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Hi, Supervisor Rao. Thank you for your update. And my question to you would be, if cities are tasked with taking over the responsibility for enforcement, do you think that any of that $380 million, which is only for COVID-19, could be allocated for that COVID-19 enforcement? Thank you.
I absolutely think that it is an allowable expense that could be passed through to you for COVID enforcement, and that's a great suggestion.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson had a clarifying question as well?
Thank you, Supervisor Rao. Questions in relation to the more esoteric losses? For example, you know, of course, we had, you know, we don't want to go down the same road after the fact with the RDA. We realize that the accounting, well, of course, will be very, very stringent, the partitioning that's required for that. But is there a specific description? You know, these codebooks are usually figured in a definition, and I'm looking for a definition of allowable loss. For example, what about the waste? As we started to run up towards this, nobody realized how much waste might be involved for some of the businesses, especially the restaurants? And then, you know, things that are harder to put your finger on, for example, market loss and client loss, you know, the long-term social, as you mentioned, implications. And are those under that definition?
Revenue loss is explicitly called out that it is not an allowable reimbursement. So that's unfortunate because, much like your city, the county also relies on sales tax for that. So we cannot replace those CARES Act funds for revenue loss. In terms of, like as you mentioned, the garbage buildup for certain businesses, those would be not necessarily the loss to the city in terms of revenue, but rather the specific business. And so the CARES Act funding that we would allocate, that $2,500 that I mentioned in the COVID-compliant business, the business owner can absolutely take that $2,500 if they apply for it and receive it and use it towards that type of mitigation if they have it.
See. Thank you. And what about the long-term social? Has there been any discussion in relation to that?
Anything that is touchy-feely esoteric that we can't quantify to include my spiritual well-being and yours is just not, we can't, we can't even get the governor to have our places of worship and our faith base considered to be essential or even considered in phase two. And even when we place the argument on how our churches help us with placement of homeless and helping feed people and everything else, he classifies them in the entertainment sector. So very, very frustrating for a lot of us to have that. And so, no, we have not been able to make a connection with either the government or the, with the state or the federal government in some of those softer losses that we are all experiencing.
I'm glad you used the word "soft." If there was a way to somehow quantify that over a two-year period or something of, in relation to dollars, for psychiatric or medical care, would they then start heading towards a way to allot money?
I'm not sure of that. I call that the second order of effects, correct? I mean, we have people that are losing their entire lives around them. How can there not be a second order of effect from that from a mental, emotional standpoint? And when I talk about us being holistic creatures, we have to, I think, be in balance, and that speaks to that. And that just hasn't had any, it hasn't resonated at all with our governor. And I'm truly at a loss as to that because it does create, I mean, if we lose our homes, if people are out because they can't afford rent, and those protections are currently in place at the moment, but certainly not long-term. And how do we help people get back on their feet for the long haul where they don't lose their businesses, their homes, their marriages, and things like that? And those effects will be long-lasting, and I'm not sure that the government will have the appetite to quantify that as COVID-related. Certainly, if they did, they would be doing it now and saying that maybe our shelter in place has ramifications just greater than our physical health, and we're not seeing that out of Governor Newsom's office yet.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Mr. Duffey, you had a clarifying question?
Yes. Good evening, Supervisor Rao. One of the questions that I had is that the CARES Act establishes funding for the county in two ways. One is through the CBGG CV funding for community development block grants, and the other is for populations over 500,000. And so it's my understanding that HUD sent out specific guidelines that said monies to cities that were earmarked for those cities with over 500,000 population, that they could, there were no restrictions on that money. Is that the $380 million that you're referencing earlier today?
No. So HUD's money and its allocation is separate from that, and Grand Terrace's allocation. And as a matter of fact, we have four cities within the county of San Bernardino that participate in the community development block grant that is coming out of our housing and urban development. And the disbursement from the county to those cities had to be a minimum of $100,000 to each municipality that participates, and we had four that based on the criteria, and this was very interesting to me as the new supervisor, we had a disproportionate amount, I felt, in my opinion, that was going to one city over the rest of the cities, and so I dug in deeper to find out. And there are certain things that they determine. So it's your population, it's your level of poverty, it's your density of housing related to the unhoused, and how they go in and arrive at a score. And so some cities receive a higher allocation of the CBGG funding. And we did have four cities, and I believe Grand Terrace was one of them, that were under the $100,000 threshold for that disbursement of the federal funding to come for COVID. And the county backfilled and made up the difference in that so that each city would have at least a minimum of $100,000 that would come to them through that CBGG funding. So, but that is different than the $380 million that I referenced.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have another question.
Okay. Councilmember Allen, clarifying question. Remember, we're still in public comment. And you're muted now. Okay, start over, please. Are you sure?
Well, I wanted to ask, mention, you can stop me if I'm not supposed, it's about this, though. I would just like to mention to the supervisor just quickly...
Okay. Well, this would be a clarifying question time because we are in public comment.
That's why I said disregard.
Okay. So you'll follow up with the supervisor after, as she has invited us to, correct?
Right. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Rao, I appreciate you calling in and being with us here tonight and sharing some of the information that you have. And I know that the Board of Supervisors has some work ahead of them for tomorrow. Best wishes to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I appreciate the time this evening. Have a great night.
Thank you. You, too. All right. Do we have any other requests to speak during this time? No, Madam Mayor. Okay. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for their communications, and we will begin with Jeff Allen.
I have nothing to report. Mayor, I did go to the city testing that they had at the Azure Hills Church for the coronavirus, so I participated in that. I'd like to thank the county for doing that for us and for the city manager and staff for helping work that out. It was a great thing, well-run, and thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey?
I have nothing at this time, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Yes, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the passing of a former county supervisor, Dennis Hansberger. He served as a county supervisor for Grand Terrace both times that he served, and sitting here, I realize that we are a city because he shepherded that process and advocated for Grand Terrace. And I knew him because I worked for the Board of Supervisors during his second term, and I felt, you know, personal loss. I really looked up to him. Many of the obituaries that mention his strong moral compass and his diligence to make sure there was a right outcome in policy is really appreciated, and I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right. During our environmental times here, we still continue on with our transportation. OmniTrans Board of Directors, they met on May 6, and they were looking at, if you can believe this, through the end of February of this year, OmniTrans system-wide ridership was up 1.8%, but it was still up compared to last year at this time. So it was on pace to be the first positive ridership year since 2012. And so following the stay-at-home order, OmniTrans ridership fell 65% compared to prior year and remained at that level from mid-March through mid-April. And so at the last board meeting, OmniTrans gave a presentation to the board on its emergency service deployment plan, which the board accepted. And so the routes that they operate every 10, 15, or 20 minutes were reduced to 30 minutes. Routes that operated every 30 minutes were reduced to hourly. This kept every OmniTrans route in service in order to provide lifeline coverage service through OmniTrans service area. One of the things that they did put in place is they began to have entry through the back of their buses so that their drivers were kept at a distance from the riders, and because of that, riders were not able to put money in the fare box, so the rides are essentially free at this time. So not only is ridership fell, but they're not charging for ridership. So additionally, like I said, with the decline in ridership, the resulting fare revenue and the state of the economy resulting in financial uncertainty, they have looked at certain flexible plans that they're going to put in place with respect to layoffs if things don't open up and ridership doesn't increase. if things don't open up and ridership doesn't increase. They are looking at a, the reduced service through the summer, and they figure that the ridership will not rebound quickly. Summer ridership is typically 10 to 15% below other months, and with schools, colleges, and universities reopening for normal activities, there might be a trigger for beginning to restore service. On May 6th, the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Board met, and it was really timely. We were able to have a firsthand report on economic conditions by Christopher Thornburg from UC Riverside Center for Economic Forecasting and Development. In our special meeting packet, the Beacon Economics Report was something that has come through Christopher Thornburg's business. So it was nice to be able to hear him give a firsthand account on his take on what he believes could be a very quick recovery once we do eventually start to open. So we approved, we also approved revised local transportation fund estimate apportionment based on reduced fiscal year revenue estimates from the previous estimate. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we authorized the release of a local transportation fund reserves to transit operators immediately as needed. That would include OmniTrans and other local bus operators. We also allocated CARES Act funding to these transit operators. We approved the advance of up to five years of the City of San Bernardino's estimated equitable share of Measure I major street project arterial sub-program funds for various arterial widening projects. A big part of that is going to be them being able to pay for their share of the Mount Vernon Viaduct project that is set to start sometime in the near future. We also adopted a final environmental impact report for the West Valley Connector project and related environmental impact report. And we received a little bit of good news from the Southern California Area Association of Governments. SBCTA was awarded the 2020 SCAG Sustainability Award for the Clean Cities Alternative Fuels and Infrastructure, and this was for the Redlands Passenger Rail Zero Emission Multiple Unit Buses that we will have come online in a few years. And so then on May 12, or today, there was a conference call with the Board of Supervisor Chair Kurt Hagman, but Supervisor Rao went over many of the, the elements to that. One of the things that was mentioned, though, is that the federal legislature is set to vote on Friday on what they're calling the HERO Act. And this is going to look like 12, or $3 trillion of that, $250 billion specifically to cities, and they're expecting that those funds will have a recovery of lost expenses component to it. And so that was one of the things that we were not getting from the, the CARES Act funding that we currently have or the FEMA. And so I do have a, a copy of what the HEROES Act goes over, not gonna, not gonna talk about it in depth, but if any of my colleagues are interested in a copy of this, I will forward what was sent to me from the Board of Supervisors. As I said, they're set to vote on it Friday, so we'll see if that actually comes to fruition. And so with the passing of former supervisor Dennis Hansberger, I would like to close in his memory today. And that will be the end of my report, so we will move back to our agenda. We do not have public hearings because we moved that to new business. So we will go on to unfinished business, which is the item number eight on our agenda, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to adopt by reference the 2019 California Fire Code with local amendments. And so since this is a second reading, we do not have a staff report. Is that correct? No, no, no report, correct?
There's just an introduction. There's no, there's no report.
Mr. Weiss, can you please unmute? Mr. Weiss, do you have an introduction for this item?
Yes. Actually, I did have a brief report, but it's, it's really not necessary. It's, it's second reading of, of the ordinance. No changes have occurred since the April 28th meeting, and it would be an ordinance of the council, the City of Grand Terrace, adopting by reference the 2019 Fire Code as amended by the San Bernardino Fire Protection District Number 2001 and repealing and replacing Grand Terrace Municipal Code Chapter 15.18 in its entirety to incorporate the new code as amended. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Do you have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any final last burning questions at this point? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to, on this item. Is there a motion on this item?
So move.
Make the motion.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Councilmember Allen. Mr. City Attorney, will you read by title, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Adopting by Reference the 2019 California Fire Code as Amended by San Bernardino County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number 20-01 and Repealing and Replacing Grand Terrace Municipal Code Chapter 15.18 in its entirety to incorporate the new code as amended. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Weiss. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Mcnammo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Item number nine is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amending titles four, five, six, eight, 10, 12, and 13 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to authorize the adoption of certain fees and deposits by resolution. Is that Assistant City Manager Fortune?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem. City Council. As the mayor had mentioned, it is a, a second reading to amend titles four, five, six, eight, 10, 12, and 13 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to authorize the city council to adopt certain fees and deposits by resolution. No changes have been made to the proposed ordinance since its introduction, and it is now ready for the second reading and the adoption. So we can go to the last slide, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Okay. Any last-minute questions from the council? Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll make the motion to move the recommendation.
Of course you will. Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hesse. Madam, Mr. City Attorney, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Amending Sections in Titles Four, Five, Six, Eight, Ten, Twelve, and Thirteen of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to Authorize the City Council to Adopt Certain Fees and Deposits by Resolution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Mcnammo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move to item 10, under New Business. This is a resolution reaffirming and reorganizing certain fees and deposits originally in the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. Titles Four, Five, Six, Eight, Ten, Twelve, and Thirteen. Madam Assistant City Manager Fortune?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. I, I do not know if the PowerPoint is up.
It is now.
Thank you. So as you had mentioned, this is the resolution to reaffirm the second reading of the ordinance that you just adopted. Next slide, please. So the staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services provided. Next slide, please. California state law establishes that city council may institute reasonable fees for the processing of permits and regulatory activities, as long as the fees do not exceed the amount reasonably required to administer the processing of the permits and regulatory activities. Next slide, please. So on April 14, 2020, a first reading was held to amend the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, amending titles four, five, eight, 10, 12, and 13 to authorize the city council to adopt certain fees and deposits by resolution. No changes have been made to the proposed ordinance since its introduction, and the second reading had just been approved. Next slide, please. So, so piece set by resolution, the establishment of fees are administrative in nature and more often subject to change in order to effectively allow the city to recover its costs for services provided. And staff will make recommendations for city council approval based on actual costs incurred. Next slide, please. As attached, fees will be submitted to city council annually for their review and approval, and a comprehensive fee schedule, similar to the one that's attached to the staff report, will be submitted for council's review during the annual budget process. Now, any changes to the fees will have a justification, the reason for it, and those will always be presented to city council. Next slide, please. We also wanted to add that fees may also be submitted to city council for their review and approval during the course of the fiscal year if staff believes that said fees warrant a separate review instead of waiting for the annual budget approval process. Next slide, please. And as mentioned, this is part of the city council's top priority projects list. No fees are proposed to be revised or adjusted at this time. So this is the resolution now authorizing that the fees are now in place by resolution since we now have just taken them out of the municipal code. Next slide, please. Staff recommends the, the adoption of the resolution reaffirming and reorganizing certain fees and deposits previously established in the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. That ends my report. I will be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there any quest, questions of staff at this time? All right. Let's see, no one asking for questions. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Come back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move adoption of the resolution.
I'll second.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Councilmember Allen. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Mcnammo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. So we will head back to item number seven, which is consideration of recommendations for community development block grant COVID-19 virus, Community Development Block Grant-CV Funds. Is this Director Steve Weiss?
Madam Mayor, I believe.
Hi, Madam Mayor. This is Todd Nakasaki, management analyst. I'll be presenting the CBG Coronavirus Funding Recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Nakasaki.
Yeah. So I'm here to talk about the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funding. And, next slide, please. And in this presentation, I will give you a brief background of the CBG Coronavirus Program, talk about the program requirements, discuss eligible activities for funding, and finally give staff recommendations. Next slide. The staff report before you promotes our 2030 Vision Statement, a place where residents can enjoy quality of life that fosters pride and an engaged community in that the CBG Program funds community programs that benefit Grand Terrace residents and supports goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships. Next slide. On March 27, 2020, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act was signed into law to respond to the growing effects of this historic public health pandemic. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, released a special allocation of community development block grant CBG funds to San Bernardino County as a preemptive means through prevention, preparation, and response to coronavirus. Next slide. The CBG Coronavirus Program supports activities that prevent and/or respond to the spread of the coronavirus or other infectious diseases, and requires that activities funded will benefit low and moderate income residents. The city's expected allocation from the county for CBG Coronavirus funds is $100,000. Next slide. As part of the activity application process, city staff met with the San Bernardino County Community Development and Housing Department to discuss CBG Coronavirus Program eligible activities. Based on those discussions with the county, two of the three proposed activities considered by city staff were deemed eligible by the county. The first eligible activity you'll see on this slide is the Food Bank Partnership Program with our local organizations. The recommended funding is $16,000. The second eligible activity is the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department Hope Program. The recommended funding for that is $84,000 for the total requested amount of $100,000. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendation is to prioritize funding allocations and authorize staff to submit the city's CBG Coronavirus Funding Recommendations to the San Bernardino County Economic Development Agency. And next slide. And that concludes my presentation, and I can respond to any questions. And Lieutenant Lane can assist with any questions regarding the Hope Program.
Thank you, Mr. Nakasaki. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Robles?
What is our homeless population?
Based on the last count that we had from the point-in-time count, we had, I think it was, was at two. But we are seeing, I can say we are seeing significant increase in terms of a homeless population since the, since the COVID-19 activity. I don't have the actual count, but certainly based upon the calls and information that we receive from the Sheriff's Department, I can provide you with updated information.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Mr. Nakasaki, I, I do have a question about the, the distribution through the Hope Program. How, how are these commodities, if I'm, if I'm assuming correctly, then distributed to what sector of the population?
I couldn't speak to the sector of the population. I, I think the numbers were run based on that first pilot program that we had done, and I had met with Director Weiss to, to make that recommendation.
So in the...
Mr. Duffy?
Sure. And so just a point of clarity, I, I think I didn't quite understand Mayor Protem's question regarding the distribution. Was he referencing the, for the Hope Program or was it for the, the Food Bank Program also?
I believe it was for the Hope Team. Or were you asking for the, the direct allocation between the two projects? Mayor Protem?
The ma, the mayor is correct. It was the Hope Program. I just wanted to find out how the coordination, the, let's say, boots-on-the-ground coordination actually takes place.
And that might be something for Lieutenant.
To, to Lane?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And...
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protim, and City Council. The Hope Team, as you know, is a component of the Sheriff's Department that engages in contacting and providing outreach services for members of the community who are determined to be homeless. To respond to, I think, a population count, some information that I've received from the Hope Team recently with regards to numbers in this city are still relatively low, even though it appears that certain increases may be seen throughout the community. But they've assured me that they deal regularly and have statistical data on four individuals within the city that they have provided services to. So with that said, there's certain services and outreach opportunities that that Hope Team can provide to those folks, and I don't have all of the particular information as to how they go about doing that or what those services are, but they do provide joint support through other organizations in the county. I'm not sure if that adequately answers your question, however.
Mayor Protim, does it answer your question?
Well, I'm sorry, the only other meat I'd like to know about it is, okay, so what does it, what's the impact on the need? Somebody handing canned food to somebody, or are they paying their rent? I know the county has a lot of programs in relation to that, welfare to work and transitional programs. And I really trust the Sheriff's Office and the way they administrate things. They know their people, they know who's out there, they've got boots on the ground all the time. I'd just like to know how, you know, how the program works.
So--
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, so Mayor Protim, if I can join in. So if you recall, the Hope Program required us to have officers, although the Hope Program does have a team of, I think, four people who are trained on, and their overall aspect is for community outreach. So they're trained on all of the county's social programs. So when they engage the homeless population, they also provide them with information. They provide them with information on where to go, what to do. Let me just give you very quickly a successful story that happened recently. So most recently, a gentleman who used to be, lived in the motorhome park in Grand Terrace, he was removed from the motorhome park and parked the trailer on the outside next to Fitness Park. That gentleman was, I think, an 80-year-old person, the motorhome didn't work anymore. He was actually aligned with someone who was taking advantage of him. The neighbors in the area were very concerned, first, about the motorhome being there and leaking sewage and so on and so on. The second thing was the gentleman was an elderly gentleman who, they said, was dehydrated and had some concerns. So once that information came out, the Hope Team was activated. The Hope Team found his son. They actually engaged the son to come out. They engaged a location where the vehicle could be towed and transported, and they also found housing along with the county housing program. So that's a successful story where the Hope Officers or the Sheriff's Department, their number-one goal is to engage the homeless population. But they engage and they also have a list of resources that they can connect those county resources with that person to get them the help that they need. And that would be the case in terms of our current Hope Program. Currently, we had about $26,000 in our housing program that we allocated to the Hope Program. The officer who comes out, I think, 10 hours a month, comes out and what he does is he was trained in making the connection with all the social services that are there. Some of our past successes have been the Hope Officers have identified homeless camps that are surrounding the Grand Terrace area. They've worked with us to clear those camps and also provide resources. There have been cases where the Hope Officer has made contact with an individual seven to eight times before the individual actually received the help that the officer wanted. So that's one way in which the program works, sir.
Thank you. You certainly answered my question, and I applaud the Sheriff's Program. I think it's great, and it takes a lot of guts to do those kinds of services.
And so, Mayor, may I also add something to the conversation in terms of the background associated with this CDBG CV grant? So when we received this notice, we were given categories, very restrictive categories in terms of what you can apply for. There was small business loans, there was food bank help, or testing facilities, or modification of your existing facility, improvements to your existing facilities for COVID-related activities. And so we submitted three applications, and primarily because, for example, we thought about doing the small business loan program, but then you'd have to develop the infrastructure in order to do that. And so by the time we felt that we'd be able to pull this together and be able to apply for the grants, we would miss out on helping those small businesses. So one of the applications that wasn't approved was we called for a remodel of our HVAC system in our community room in case we needed to have more blood drive testing things. So we wouldn't have the recirculation of the air process going. They said that that was not acceptable. So they said, these are the programs that you can work on. So then we ended up having three programs that was almost equally funded, moving into only those primary, those two programs. And so that left us, and we also, I talked with the county, I was on a phone call with probably five county individuals, saying to them, why can't you approve a menu of programs and then allow us to bring those programs to the city council, and then we can look at what's working, and then we can say, let's choose one of these programs? But they indicated that the way the process has to work is it has to be project-specific for your community. And so when the council approves these programs, then those programs will go to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors will have a larger meeting for the approval of all of the programs that they have in place.
All right. Councilmember Robles?
I remember the Hope Program. I remember how it was funded and all that. It just struck me odd that eight hours per week on homeless would come up to $84,000 in a year.
No, the existing program was $26,000.
No, I know. That's not my question. My question is, how does $84,000, how do you get eight hours per week equalling $84,000 for a year? Says the cover deputy was assigned additional eight hours per week. I guess I don't understand, are we paying for the 40-hour deputy or an eight-hour deputy?
Okay, Mr. Weiss, you or Todd want to answer that question, or I just kind of, I'm trying to look at the information that she's referencing.
Mr. Nakasaki, can you address that question?
I don't have the hour, I would say the breakdown for the hours. I did base that off of the $26,000 and extrapolated that for extended period of, I think, a number of four months or so.
All right, so the last allocation, we had covered how much time?
Yeah, so this paragraph that we're referencing relates to the September 11, 2018 Housing Program, which was based on eight hours. We're not saying that eight hours is going to equal 84. We're going to be getting additional hours with the Hope Program with this $84,000. And so my, it's my quick calculation, we pay about $79 to $80 per hour for a sheriff. And so you look at this number and you divide that by the--
Councilmember Robles, have you looked at packet page 100?
Yes, I can't get to packet page 100.
Okay. Then I'm going to ask this question in anticipation of you looking at that. It says $49,000 for personnel and $35,000 for equipment, rental, lease, or purchase. So there's a $49,000 in personnel. Now there's this equipment charge of $35,000. What equipment would we be purchasing for this program? Mr. Nakasaki?
Oh, go ahead, Steve. Did you have--
Mayor and council, in anticipation of the COVID, I think part of it was to deal with any type of crisis that could occur. We were looking at this pandemic from a worst-case scenario, that there could be other equipment, that there could be other support from the sheriff, maybe there could be other people that might need to support it, similar to what City Manager Duffy stated. There could be other indigent types of people in the community that could need these types of services.
Mayor, I also think that part of the thing is too, is that with the COVID-19, I think that the first responders are having additional equipment as they're responding to--
Personal protective equipment?
Yes, and that might be a portion, a portion of some of the costs associated with this. And so it looks like that based on the personnel costs, we're looking at about 612 hours of additional labor from the Sheriff's Department to be able to respond to Hope-related homeless activities. We can certainly come back with a list of details based upon what this $35,000 would be.
Further questions, Councilmember Robles? Okay. Councilmember Hesse?
It's for Mr. Duffy. So how many hours do we have prior on the Hope Program before?
I believe the staff report indicates that it's about eight hours per week focusing on assisting homeless.
Okay. This question, when, because we personally had a run-in with a homeless person, and you were trying to get ahold of the Hope Officer, and I guess they weren't available at the time, and then unfortunately, incident occurred with your vehicle, personal incident, and the Sheriff's had to be called. I mean, if we had this more hours on here with that incident, would it have been avoided? Probably if the Hope Officer was there.
Well, you know, one of the things that happens is that because we have the Hope Officer for eight hours, that means he could have a certain routine over day. And so when we call now, we call the sheriff, and the sheriff comes out, and the sheriff comes out, and it's not a high, it's not the high-priority call because it's just the checking, it's just the checking on the situation. So if you have a Hope Officer in town more hours per day, it becomes their priority call. And so it's sort of like, you know, when you have priority emergency one, two, and three, this is probably a three or four in terms of activity. So having a Hope Officer in town would make, more often, would make a homeless-related issue a higher priority, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the, my question, I was going to use the reference on page 100, but the mayor already went there with that. I was going to suggest with the equipment, you could look at our CERT program, but my other question is, were there any other programs that were unrelated? And the, for example, for seniors, for our senior center or for seniors in general?
Mr. Duffy?
We--
Or do they qualify?
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Councilmember Allen, actually, we did look into these areas, but one challenging area is that Grand Terrace, Terrace's demographics really do not fit in with what's called the low-moderate category. So similar to what Mr. Duffy cited regarding the air exchange system at the community room, these are the types of programs that unfortunately Grand Terrace cannot qualify.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. So, Mr. Duffy, you mentioned that one of the categories was testing. Was that paying to have testing sites come here?
Well, it would be doing your testing sites, it would be doing, outfitting your city hall or location for testing center, yes.
Is it too late to add that in as another option, to have another testing day here?
Well, here's the thing, the county public health will work with you on establishing that. For example, one of the things the county public health says that they will, they have a set day, they will establish a day at our senior center for testing just for that, the elderly population, so we're working with them on that.
All right, so we don't share in the cost of those testing days?
We do not, absolutely. And just like, for example, the food program, the Great Plates Program that the county's putting on that allows seniors to get three meals per day, that is a free service that the state's put on, that the county, each county's operating. We don't have to pay for that. Our goal is to promote that, to promote that program. The one area that we could connect with was with our local nonprofits for the food banks, and so we were able to move that forward.
Okay. And I have seen a number of individuals that I believe are homeless that are new to this community within the last month or two. And so even though our point-in-time count was very low, I think we do have a number of additional individuals that have come to our city, probably because it's a safe place to be, I would guess. All right, any further questions of staff at this time? All right, any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Councilmember Hesse?
I'd like to make a motion to apply, authorize the staff to apply for the CDBG coronavirus program funding for both the Food Bank Partnership Program and for the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Hope Program.
I'll second it.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Hesse, and a second by Councilmember Robles. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor McNaboe?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item of business is item number 11 on the agenda, City of Colton Environmental Document for Public Review pertaining to development of 79 single-family residential homes to be located along Litten Avenue, Bostock, and Palm Avenue in the La Loma Hills north of Locadina Drive. Mr. Steve Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor McNaboe, and council members. The item before you is, as you mentioned, a notice of intent to release an environmental document. Next slide, please. As a background, Planning and Development Services, we did receive a notice of public comment from the City of Colton, serving, serves as the lead agency. So the notice basically talks about a mitigated negative declaration for 79 single-family detached cluster-style homes on 49 acres, and it's located along Litten Avenue, Bostock, and Palm Avenue in the La Loma Hills north of South Locadina Drive. Next slide, please. This is, I don't expect you to read this whole thing, but it's an example of what you would receive in the mail if you lived within a certain distance of the project. It basically talks about the notice, the location, and also the availability of the environmental document that's hyperlinked on this, and I'll show that later, and it talks about the amount of time. You can comment on this. Next slide, please. This notice was also sent to all bordering Grand Terrace residences along the eastern boundary of the project, and staff is currently reviewing the draft environmental document for public comment. Next slide, please. So here's a little map that shows the project area. The project site is in black, and Grand Terrace is just right there, which I colored in to show you that it shares the border. It's pretty much along Bostock Avenue, and this area is a semi-private road in this area. There's, it's very hilly up there. And basically, this is the area. And they're basically going to cut into the hills and flatten the pads and put up homes between lots 5,000 and 12,000 square feet. Next slide, please. This is an example of the development plan for the homes, the 79 homes. You would enter from Litten Avenue and then you would go right on Bostock. But they own a considerable amount more property there. Next slide, please. So here's an example of the elevations. This came out of the environmental document. They've applied for a full development package, tentative tract map, a development plan. But those are not going to hearing in the near future. They have not been scheduled. But the environmental document is what public agencies and residences are reviewing. Next slide, please. So the recommendation at this time, this is more of a receive and file for you. But just so you're aware, if your constituents ask you about the project and that, we are on top of it. We're working on it. It's available for public view 30 days. If you hyperlink this, go to the Colton website. It will provide all the technical studies and all that. So again, we're providing this for information only and therefore requesting city council receive and file this report. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Director.
My remarks, and if you should have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Weiss. Mayor Protem Wilson, you have questions?
I'd just like to mention to Director Weiss that we recently agreed to maintain a traffic light along Locadina. And it appears as if this project might contribute to some traffic load along that area. How were they, I know that you're in the process of reviewing their environmental impact report. Is there any mention of circulation impact?
That's a very good question, Councilmember. And probably I know a little bit too much about this project because I was there before. So there actually, there is a fair share component tied to that signal. And that's not just there, but it actually extends. The applicant is required to pay a fair share on a number of intersections, not just in Colton, but also in Grand Terrace and along the Caltrans area, too. So it's identified in there. We're reviewing it for adequacy.
So it's something we can count on, that the money will filter down to the City of Grand Terrace, then?
Yeah, it's probably not a lot of money, but it's a fraction and every little bit will help.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask Mr. Weiss, I just want to make sure I understand. It's sort of like what Mayor Protem Wilson was asking about. Will there be developer impact fees that'll cover the added load, not just to that light, but to that section of Locadina and the roads that we own? And so I think.
Another excellent question. Get better, that's why we're reviewing it. We'll compare it against our roadway programs and everything else, too, as far as all forms of services. And we will develop a letter and we will, you know, we'll look at the environmental document and comment on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Okay, anybody requesting to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we'll bring it back and I'll make a motion to receive and file.
I'll second.
Okay, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Mcnammo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number 12 is the adoption of capital improvement project for fiscal years 2021 through 2425. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Allen French, Public Works Director, here to present this item, which is the annual update for our capital improvement program for the Measure I passed through money. This item supports Goal 2030, number two, maintaining public safety and investing in critical improvements. Slide, please. In November of 2016, the city adopted a five-year CIP to address road maintenance for the local roads in the city. Pavement management program was used to assign ratings based on the street condition, then ranked the streets, and developed a five-year implementation program. Next slide, please. This year is the third project, which will include grinding and overlaying of up to 11 streets. The segments in this segment, in this portion, are estimated to cost $903,000. In addition to that, we are combining the following year streets, which are about eight of them, and to grind and overlay those for the fourth list. And that estimate is about $1.6 million for those slides. For those slides. Next slide, please. This is the fourth year streets that are involved. Next slide, please. We are participating in the total road improvement program to help fund the project. This program borrows money for future allotments to come up with a pool of money to do a project all at one time so we can take advantage of the economies of scale. The funds should be available in July this year, and we plan to bid the project shortly after. Staff is recommending that council adopt the resolution approving the five-year program at this time. And I am happy to answer any questions that council should have.
Thank you, Director French. Questions for staff? All right, see, no questions. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll bring it back to council to consider a motion.
Motion for approval, Mayor?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wilson and a second by Councilmember Allen. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Mcnammo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go to item 13, which is COVID-19 Update and Strategy to Reopen City Facilities and Request from Graduating Class of 2020. Mr. Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, on March 24, 2020, the city council approved the proclamation, emergency proclamation regarding COVID-19. And so now we find ourselves in a little different situation where we're actually coming out of this, we believe we're coming out of the process of going back to normal. And so one of the things that we are going to be doing is reopening some of our city facilities. As the council is aware, we currently opened Richard Rollins Park, and we also opened the fitness park. Each park is outfitted with a handwashing station and a big notice that indicates for the residents, you know, to be aware that they're in this area and that to practice social distancing. So our next park is the Veterans Freedom Park. It's opening on May 14, that's this Thursday. We also are asking residents to practice social distancing and wear masks while in the park. Handwashing stations will be on-site. The restrooms, the play and exercise equipment, gazebos, and parking lots will remain closed until further notice. Fields are closed to organize sports. And so this posting is going to go out tonight or tomorrow for the residents in the area. The next park is the Dog Park. Our scheduled reopening for this is Thursday, May 21, 2020. Residents should also, once again, practice social distancing and wear masks while at the park. Handwashing stations will be on-site. Now, the following is a recommendation. And so what's happening in most of the retail centers we have throughout the country is they're recommending to really only put about 20% of the use of the space allowable to customers. So based on our parks, we have, in the Dog Park, we have a small park and a large dog park. So we're recommending that no more than eight people are in the small dog park at one time. And we ask people to please limit their time to no more than 30 minutes. That is just a recommendation to be a good neighbor, to allow, to be able to go in and be able to not have any sort of a social conflict. On the other side, we have, on the large dog park, we're recommending no more than 15 people in the large dog park at one time. And we ask them to please limit your time to 30 minutes. Now, obviously, if you're the only person that's there, you can stay as long as you want. But when there's a big crowd, we recommend that you be a good neighbor and allow your neighbors to use the park after you're done. And so we ask people also to please to not use the benches or the picnic tables because while we will go through and clean those areas, we're not going to be there to clean use one after the other. And so those two locations will be opening, as I said, one is Thursday, and the Dog Park will be the following Thursday.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Before you go into this, is there a reason why you're waiting till the 21st for the Dog Park?
Yes, we had some issues that recently reoccurred with our sprinkler system. The Dog Park is all solar, so there's no electricity on-site. And so we had an issue with the solar panel. The solar panel was not functioning, so therefore the watering system wasn't in place. So we'll have the park, we believe, in tip-top shape by the 21st of May.
All right, Councilmember Hesse.
So you're saying our grass has died in the Dog Park?
Yes, and we're beginning to have some concern about, the grass continues to die in one section of the Dog Park. Whenever there's an issue, it's just one section. So we got to be close to this, even that either there's a fungus or contamination in that particular area, or our sprinkler system isn't properly aligned.
And we didn't have staff look at that? I mean, they're not looking at the Dog Park every day just to check on it prior to opening or see, make sure the sprinklers are working? I mean, if they see the grass is dying, being proactive on this?
Well, my goal, my thought process is that, yes, they would have been proactive. Now, what's happening is, this is happening on the very end of the park. And I think the system went awry maybe last Thursday or Friday. And over the weekend, we had warm weather, and I think that might have contributed to the factor. But we will certainly make sure that we establish some protocols, ensure that we don't have this problem again.
Is there any way you can just cordon off that area of the Dog Park and open it sooner?
We could, we could examine that. Let me work with the maintenance staff to see what that area looks like.
I'm just thinking of all the parks that we have. That one's probably the easiest one to social distance. And I did walk by the Dog Park yesterday, and it looked pretty nice all the way through. So if there's an area that's dead, it's not a majority of the park.
Right, absolutely not a majority of the park.
So.
Okay.
So that would just be my ask, if there's any way to do that.
Okay, I'll sit down with staff tomorrow and look at that, absolutely.
Any further questions on the parks before we move on? All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy.
So as the council is aware, this is the Grand Terrace High School Titans. This is the class of 2020. And unfortunately for this particular class, they've come into an issue where COVID-19 has ruined their grad night, their graduation, and multiple activities. So the activities director for the high school contacted me and requested that. So Grand Terrace's normal high school graduation includes fireworks. And the fireworks are normally put on by fundraising from the parents and the high school students. The Colton Joint Unified School District does not fund fireworks shows. And so one of the things that the activities director requested was that they talked with a fireworks company and they said, "How can we create a fireworks show that can be seen by everyone in the community without having to gather in one location?" And so what the fireworks company said was, "The best location is the high school baseball soccer, baseball fields that are right next to Veterans Freedom Park." Now, the school district does not, will not allow the high school class to do a fireworks show. But the city does have a joint use agreement. And the high school class asked us, because the City of Colton normally does an annual fireworks show to celebrate their annual anniversary. So they said, "Is this something that the city could sponsor in terms of just hosting the facility? We will pay for the entire event." And so they were requesting that this fireworks show occur on May 28, 2020. I contacted the superintendent and the school board and asked if they had any issues if the city did agree to sponsor this particular program. The superintendent said that he would check, and he said to me that there doesn't appear to be any issue associated with us sponsoring and using our joint use agreement to host the program. We anticipate that the cost for the fireworks show, for a three-to-five-minute fireworks show, would be about $3,500. And then we're anticipating two officers, about 10 hours for the evening, would be about $700, $800. And then for the remaining, for our maintenance staff to have to be available for any issues associated with the setup or the takedown for the pirate company. So we anticipate between $5,000 and $7,000 is the total cost. And that's what the high school parents and the class of 2020 would need to pay the city for our cost and also the cost for the fireworks company.
Thank you. Questions?
I do.
Councilmember Robles and then Allen?
I would just, so they have the appropriate funds? They have that level of funding available?
Yes, they indicated to me that they did, and they had private donors that would give them that money, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask the city manager, I just want to make sure I'm clear, that we're paying for it and they're reimbursing us, is that correct?
So.
Or we're paying for a portion?
Well, yes, and so here's how this would work, especially with the Sheriff's Department. So if we hire the sheriff to do overtime, it's a different rate than somebody else would do. So that would be the best thing for us to do, is to have the sheriff do the overtime, and then we would bill that once they gave us the proceeds for that. In addition to that, we would have our maintenance crew bill the time to this activity, and then we would send a bill and we'd be reimbursed. But the actual contract with the fireworks company, the fireworks company, they pull all the county permits and they'll work with County Fire. I've worked on that structure there. The question becomes in terms of who is actually cutting the check for the fireworks company? And that can go one of two ways. The donors can pay them directly, or we can take in the donations and then issue out the payment to the fireworks company. And by us doing that, we would end up, what I believe, an increased liability. So my goal would be is for them to pay the fireworks company, and then the fireworks company would have the proper insurances to work with us on being on-site.
That's good, because that was going to be my next question, was about liability and our responsibilities. And also, are we in danger of setting some sort of a precedent so that next year and next year and for a year on, and each and every school now? I mean, or will we say no?
Well, I think in this particular case, what the school, what the Grand Terrace High Class of 2020 is asking us is that the fireworks show, the three-to-five-minute fireworks show, is a tradition for their graduation. And so they're saying that, well, this is one of the traditions that they could keep. I don't believe they would ever ask us to do this again because part of the graduation. of the graduation ceremony is having those fireworks on-site. In this particular case, there's no community collection of people, no activity. This is, all we're doing is having a place for the fireworks company to set off the fireworks. We're not, we're not opening the parks, we're not doing anything of that particular nature. People will be able to watch the fireworks show from their homes or from their cars, but there will be no community gathering locations. And a part of the whole graduation ceremony normally is, these, the fireworks show happens at, at the, at the event.
Okay, and regarding liability, we're, we are, we're going to make sure that we're not going to be liable? Is that right?
That is correct. The fireworks company will have all the liability insurances that are necessary to assume the responsibility.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
I make a motion for a hearty approval.
All right.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wilson, a second by Councilmember Hussey. I have a question, though. Would it be possible for us to take in escrow the money that, the three to 5,000, or the 5,000 to 7,000 from the, the parents and the students and all that, so that we have it and we can pull, draw down on that instead of having to find out where they are after we have our expenses come in?
Yes, we can set up with...
Much like we would do with a developer or anybody else doing a project in town. And so we just hold it in escrow until we get those invoices, we could show them the invoices, but, but I think that would be a nice way to do that.
Yeah, so we would, we would be looking at probably anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000, and that's for the sheriff's costs and, and our costs, we can certainly do that.
Okay, and then are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I'll bring it back to council. We have a motion by Mayor Protem Wilson and a second by Councilmember Hussey. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yay!
Mayor Magnamo?
Yay!
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to our request for future agenda items by City Council, and as you remember, pursuant to Brown Act, we will not actually take action on this item, and we will not discuss other items during this time. We have one request for this evening, and it's that to prohibit the use of gas leaf blowers, and it's requested to be added to the agenda by Councilmember Sylvia Robles. Is there anything beyond that that you would like to say?
No, I just sent some articles of interest. Apparently, in a Twitter feed, the, it was brought up that a number of people now having to work at home, and that's going to be a new normal, working at home, and we don't know how long, in some jurisdictions, for, for example, the Cal State system is not going to return to physical classes, and so there was a lot of concern now that people are at home, and they're being exposed to this noise pollution, and the Air Quality Board has some tangible solutions, and finally, that there was also a nexus between respiratory issues and gas blowers, so that I thought on some future agenda that we might look at this.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Wilson, you had come in?
I will heartily support the idea of us putting it on a future agenda item, the sooner the better.
Very good. So motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yay!
Mayor Magnamo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy?
Mayor, I actually don't have a slideshow presentation today, but I do want to ask the council, one of the things that we are doing in preparation for our new budget, we need to have your priorities workshop. And so one of the things I'd like to do is try to schedule that in an off-council week, and I wanted to make sure that you might be available as early as next week, or would you like to wait until the, after the following council meeting on the 26th to have it, or that, that week or the following week after that?
Councilmember Robles, you have a preference?
I prefer after the next meeting.
All right. What about Councilmember Hussey? What do you prefer?
Either way, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, Mayor Protem Wilson?
Either way.
Councilmember Allen?
Either way, I'm fine.
Okay, if you would send us some dates, then, after the next meeting?
Will do.
All right, thank you. And that's it? That's all we have? All right. Next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 26, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to City Clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures, and we close tonight in memory of former San Bernardino County Supervisor Dennis Hansberger. Please keep his family and your thoughts and prayers.
Some of our commercial businesses would not be able...